I pledge all this lean city council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Burgoyne, Gierbaugh, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. Staff present this evening, we have City Manager Campbell, interim clerk Rutledge, Public Works Director Fordice, City Treasurer Bennett, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, Assessor Skoll, Attorney Smith, Technology Support Coordinator Shank, and Police Chief Renick. For the rest of you present, if you'd be so kind to sign up in the back, we would appreciate that. It is my duty first to make a few announcements this evening, the first of which is for my colleagues and those of you in the audience this evening, we are running live this evening, so just as an FYI, I wanted to make you aware of that. Also wanted to make you aware that this weekend was one of our police officers, Denny Groushaw's, last day of service with the city of Celine. Had a very nice retirement party today, and we wish him and his family all the best in their future endeavors. And then finally, it's my duty to announce that a longtime community leader and resident passed away last week, Alberta Rogers, who was a school board member, the first executive director of the senior center, first president of the historic society. Her husband served on this body for a number of years as mayor pro tem. More personally, she had been my family's neighbor since the fall of 1951. And I had the honor of speaking at her funeral. And one of the things that I said, and as a person of faith, I'm very cognizant of this, even though many of us will miss her greatly, we'll see her again. So, in acknowledging all that, if you would please join me in a moment of silence remembering Ms. Rogers, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments?
So move as submitted.
Moved by Rhodes to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Discussion. Hearing none. Oh, Mr. Burgoyne.
Yeah, I just wanted to add as a discussion item, the former service center property, that strip of land near the railroad.
Okay.
Bring that back. I want to make sure that's included in the transaction.
Okay. So that will be added after the, an update from our legal counsel on the fireworks ordinance. Mr. Rhodes, do you mind modifying your motion to approve as amended then?
Move to approve as amended.
Okay. Mr. Peters, you're comfortable with seconding that?
Sure.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. We have no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. We move on to one of our two presentations this evening, the first of which is a Celine Main Street update. And we have both our Main Street Director, Bob Rosenberger, and our Main Street Chair Cindy Jupko here this evening. So, please, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting us. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about Celine Main Street. I have two reasons for being here this evening. The first is to present a quarterly update on everything that's going on in Celine Main Street, and the second is to, with a signed proposal, which I believe you have a copy of as well. So, quarterly report first, if that's okay with you. Talk about what's happening at Celine Main Street. Lots is, lots is happening at Celine Main Street, as always. It's a great and fun organization. I apologize for getting this to you late, in fact, just before the meeting. I know sometimes you like to look things over beforehand, but it's been a kind of crazy and busy week with the Mastodon Mayhem Challenge, which I'll talk about in just a moment. Anyway, let's start with the design team. The design team continues to work on their master plan, their master work plan. And the first phase of that is the alley beautification project. Bee Blumen, I'm gonna run through these quickly, ask me questions if you have any. The Bee Blumen project is well underway. The flowers are in place, they look beautiful. The plaques, except for the new ones, are in place as well. And thanks to Councilman Rhodes and to the youth council for participating in getting the plaques in place, we really appreciate that. Public improvements work plan includes trash receptacles being painted this summer. The developing of gathering spaces work plan is all about the alleyway, and we are in the process of working on that. We have an arch that we're planning to put on matches or compliments, is a better word, Murphy's Crossing Arch across the street. The design team, the board members, and the council have approved the plans, and the low bidder was Valley City Sign, Michigan Company. And they will, they've been in touch with the city about permits, and they're going to begin construction drawing and construction soon, we hope. The building basics workshop, a building basics workshop, was conducted on April 29th at Bonchi Amos. It was led by a specialist from Michigan Main Street, 14 people attended. And we received two applications for design assistance, and that's exciting news. So we're hopeful that we'll get some design work done and some enrichment of our downtown area. And the agricultural, let me try that again, the architectural treasure hunt is being tweaked and finalized. Councilman Roth has been very nice and put together many pictures that we will be using. The BES, or Business and Economic Structuring Team, we did have one business that expanded in the time that we, in this last quarter, and that's Workout One at 118 East Michigan. They have a space that they've, they've really increased by tenfold. It's amazing, and you can see a picture attached there. The opportunity tour is a tour that we continue to plan and see if we can put together. It's an opportunity to look at the downtown spaces. We do have two spaces that will be opening new businesses soon. The former yoga-centric studio will be a tanning salon, and the CC Sweet House, I understand, is going to be a sandwich shop and deli. So, that's exciting news. And a market study is, you know, of course, because we've talked about it before, that we have a market study that's going to be part of, well, a market study of downtown Celine. It's, we applied in October of 2012, and were awarded this study. It's going to be conducted by a gentleman who's, who works with the National Main Street Program. The first steps included a pre-survey of our downtown businesses, an intercept, or man-on-the-street survey, a Celine-area market profile, and meetings with that consultant. Fifty percent of the businesses have responded to the surveys that we handed out, and hopefully, we're still working to hopefully get some more. We want, we'd love to have 100%, but we'll, we'll work on getting as many as we can. The next step is an important step. It's a, it takes place this Wednesday evening from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Stone Arch. It's a public meeting, the public is invited. We'd love to have as many stakeholders or people who are interested in what the future of downtown Celine can be to attend the meeting. We'll have La Croix, what's that stuff called? It's sparkling water, and cookies. So come on down. But more importantly, we'll have some great conversation and a workshop. So we're looking forward to that. At the end of your packet, you should see a flyer that, that talks about this meeting. It's called Grow Downtown. And again, it's Wednesday, July 17th, 6:00 to 7:30 at Stone Arch. On to the promotions team. Boy, the promotion team has really been busy. We just finished the Music Under the Arch program. We had 240 volunteer hours. As you know, Muta, or Music Under the Arch, is, runs through, from January through May. We had 100-plus people per event. We raised $3,600, round figures, which is very exciting stuff. It's the first year that the event has actually made a profit, so we're very excited about that. The Summer Music Series, if you've been, and I've seen many of you there, has been a great event this year. We've been filling South Ann Arbor Street with happy people and kids drawing on the, on the street, and, and great music. And kudos to our, our team who puts this together, especially the very first week, when the band that we were supposed to have canceled the afternoon of the event. And we still pulled off a great event with a substitute band, and so kudos to all those people. The Wicked Kickin' Hoedown continues. It's a country hoedown with line dancing and food and music, and a mechanical bull, and dueling banjos, and a live action, and phew, it's gonna be fun. It's really gonna be a lot of fun. That will take place in September, I mean, October, on Saturday, the 26th, at the new facility with Workout One, or that Workout One has. The Mastodon Mayhem Memorial Challenge. Thank you so much to Mr. Peters, Councilman Peters, and, and to the Celtic Festival for allowing us to be a part of that. We ran it on Saturday morning before the event took place, and it was a huge success for a first-time event. We had 133 participants, we had a lot of spectators, we had a hard-working volunteer team that put together a tremendous obstacle course, and the people came across muddy and wet and laughing and having a good time and talking about how they couldn't wait till next year so they could do this again. So we look forward to a successful event for many years to come. A lot of fun, really. Ladies Night Out, the next one is October, in October, Teresa Leichert of Oxygen Plus, and Ann Brandon from the Bling Thing are our new co-chairs, and they are tying it into October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so think pink and come on down and shop in October. The Celine Main Street is committing $1,000 toward Promote Celine, the Promote Celine effort, which I think is a great effort that we're really looking forward to seeing come to fruition, because it's gonna give us the tools we need to make Celine, to promote Celine. Oktoberfest continues to be planned. The entertainment lineup this year includes 50 Amp Fuse, the Frankenmuta Franzen, and another favorite, the Polka Riot. There you go. We're planning more games and a larger Kinder Plots area. And the banner over the street work plan is taking a little longer than usual, or not usual, but expected, I should say. And we are, but, but we're working, we're moving forward, and we're researching costs to replace the hardware at this time. On the second page, you'll see a picture of, or two pictures. One is the Celine Fiddlers at Summer Music Fest, and the second picture, we had a lot of people at Mastodon who dressed up. We encouraged contests, we had some guys running in kilts, and some teams that wore identical shirts. And this is the Minions and crew from, I don't know, what's the name of that animated film?
Despicable Me.
Yeah.
Despicable Me.
Yeah, there you go. Despicable Me, thank you. And then on to organization. In the time that, in the last quarter, we've had 149 volunteer hours for the board, 240 for the org team, 278 for the promotion team, the design team was over 115, the best team over 103, for a total of 890 volunteer hours. We have great volunteers at Celine Main Street and throughout Celine, which is pretty exciting stuff. You can see that there were several fundraising activities. We raised over $7,200, public funds, 1,230 private funds, and over $16,000, including funds from events through sponsorships. The training sessions, we had several training sessions that were attended by not only Celine Main Street people, but also by, by people within the community. The business basics had nine business and property owners, and the volunteer training had 12, including several from other organizations, so that's exciting. We do have one board member who is, has turned in her resignation, but she's hanging on for a little while longer to help see some of the projects she's begun through fruition, and that's Dorothea Mego Dowling. Let's see, the resource team visit, many of you participated in that, we appreciate your help with that. Thank you so much to City Hall for, and, and Mr. Campbell for allowing us to invade your space. That was a great visit. Great news came out of that, that they love Celine. They complimented the people, they said everybody was friendly, the downtown was clean and neat and well-kept. Everything was wonderful. Now, usually, they do a resource team visit after a community has been a Main Street community for two years. We've only been a community for one year, so we, I think that's a very positive thing that they came in, and they gave us many great compliments. They certainly had some recommendations, but they're pleased with our efforts and our results so far. And this is kind of fun. They told us that our program is quickly becoming a model for programs for new Main Street communities throughout the nation. So that's a compliment to all of us who've worked so hard on, on Celine Main Street throughout the community. The volunteer work plan, we had a specialist from Michigan Main Street come and talk with us about volunteers, and we had, it was open to the public, and we had a dozen people attending, including five leaders from volunteer-driven organizations, the Celine School Foundation, St. Andrews, Evangelical Homes, and Celine Chamber were there. So that was exciting thing, exciting thing for us, to happen for us as well. And we continue to raise funds. Our corporate sponsor program now includes Forcia, Jets Pizza, Bank of Ann Arbor, La Fontaine, Bemis Farms, Flatout Bread, Leap Air, Toyota, Toyota, Keybank, Sprint, McNaughton &amp; Gunn resale boutique, and it totals $14,700. So lots of things happening at Celine Main Street. And then the last thing I would like to talk with you about is a proposal to City Council, and if I can find it, we'll talk about it. It's to place our, our signs, our, the signs that recognize us as a Main Street community. When you're a select community or a master-level community, you get a sign, you get signs to designate your community. Our signs look like this. We have two, one for each end of town, and, anyway, we, the first step we took to figure out what to do with these was to talk to City, at the City Staff Meeting, and it was recommended there that we might replace the Cool Neighborhood signs, since the program is defunct now, and while we are still a cool neighborhood, not sure we need the signs. So, those signs exist just east of Harris on Michigan Avenue and just west of Lewis, which is convenient for us, because it marks, those are the boundaries, the east and west boundaries of our, our district. So, we request approval from City Council to hang the signs there. Any questions?
And of course, Bob, that will be a subsequent action item under New Businesses this evening, to officially do that.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I jump the gun?
Nope, no, you didn't, you didn't.
Okay.
You prefaced by, by alluding to something that will be coming up later on on the agenda, so that was good. Does any, do any of my colleagues have questions or comments for Mr. Rosenberger? Mr. Burgoyne.
Under the Economics Success Team, you have downtown housing as an item. What can we do to encourage downtown housing, or, you know, as, as you come back here in the future, if there's anything you can, you can pull us into, to try to, because I do think that when people live downtown, it makes the downtown more vibrant. So, and, and I think that's a good goal. I don't see anything, any activity there, but it'd be nice in the future to have some activity there.
Agreed. And it is a discussion point, and it will probably be a discussion point on our Wednesday, at our Wednesday evening public forum, public workshop. It's, we find that, the research tells us that 20-somethings are looking for places in communities, downtown residences, so it's something that, that we're aware of. It's on the sheet, because that's part of the reporting.
Sure.
Cindy's here. It's part of the reporting, it's part of the reporting to, to Michigan Main Street.
And one of the things that we also wanted to let you know is that our strategic planning is going to be next, is that Wednesday, too, the 24th?
No.
There's been, you know, like, every day of the week.
Yeah.
But on the 24th, we take our results from the resource team visit, and now the board's going to start really brainstorming and do their strategic planning for 2014. And then those goals will be set, and then each of the work, each of the four teams will take a look at what those goals are, and things like that will be brought up and talked about. But definitely agree with you, that is a big part of revitalizing downtown.
Well, thank you both, we greatly appreciate you being here. And I'll just reiterate one more time, because this, this flyer was provided to each one of you, and I've seen a number of these around the community. Please make an effort, if your schedule permits, to attend this, this event this Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in downtown Celine at Stone Arch. As the flyer says, it's our future, so don't miss it. So, hope to see everyone there.
And council members are invited to our strategic planning, so we will get an email out to Todd.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both, appreciate it. Okay. If there's nothing further relating to our Main Street update, I'm gonna ask our Technology Director, Mr. Schock, to come forward to talk about Citizen Engagement Portal, which is something we've discussed in the past. It's something that Councilmember Rhodes has been very passionate about, and so we've done a little bit of, of research and background. And Chris is here to report back on it. Thank you for being here, Chris.
Oh, thank you. Give the screen a second to come down, and then get into it here. Okay. So, what I'd like to unveil today is two, what I feel is really exciting ways we can interact with our residents on a new level. The first product I'm gonna show is by Granicus. It is an online feedback portal. So, just to give a little feedback on Granicus, they are the biggest player in the space. They only work with government entities from our size city to all the way to the federal level. So that's, that's all they do, is just government, and it's all different facets.
Chris, sorry to interrupt, because you're on a roll, and you're doing a great job.
Okay.
I just wanted, just to give a little more detail.
Oh, okay.
That, as the mayor mentioned, Mr. Rhodes, it pushes us out there, and, and so staff, City Council directed staff to look at some of the different social media's capabilities out there, whether it be, and I certainly don't, I'm not gonna steal very much of Chris's thunder, because he's done a great job, but from the apps on the phones, to, you know, reporting a pothole, to, to asking, surveying our residents, what they think about a project or an idea or something of that nature. So what we did, there's a, as we all might imagine, there's a ton of these companies out there that provide these types of services. And so, staff, and mainly Chris, we asked him, he took a number of these different companies and met with them, and went through what they have to offer, and this is, is staff's recommendation as far as where we think would be the plus, the, the best way to go in this direction, if that's what council wants us to do. So, unless there's any questions, I just wanted to give a little preface for the folks at home, as well as out in the audience, too, so we know a little context. So, all right, thank you, Chris.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll jump back in. So, like you were saying, Granicus is the biggest player in the space, and I feel they have the, really the best offering for what we're looking to achieve here. So, how Granicus works is they have a lot of different facets of what we're looking to do. So, all these kind of puzzle pieces here rely on the Granicus Open Platform. The piece I'm specifically looking at right now is the Citizen Participation Suite, but down the road, we could always add them later if we want to get more into it. The one that also kind of excites me is the Government Transparency Suite, is really for online records management, which is kind of a, kind of a nice feature. And it would, they would integrate together. So, but down the road, that's something we could look at. But for right now, I'm gonna focus on the Citizen Participation Suite. So, how it works is it, it will be totally online through an app or through a website. So, we'll have a link on our city website directing residents to that place. It's completely automated, people can fill it out, we will be alerted to that proposal or whatever they're looking to do, and it makes it really easy. So there's very limited staff time to kind of monitor it. It's really kind of self-sufficient, so. How it works is there's, there's three different levels to it. The open, kind of crowdsourcing, if you will. People can post ideas, so hey, I think we should do this in the community. They can post it, we'll be alerted to it, and then also, other residents can be, interact with that idea. So hey, I think that's a great idea, we should do it as well, and we can see that in real time. Hey, there's a lot of traction on this, we should look at it and kind of focus on it. The other one, the focus projects, are things we can put out there. So, from City Staff perspective, from a council perspective, that's things we can blast out. I was kind of curious, I know Mr. Hart put out a thing on Facebook about the AHTA project, would be a great example of that. Hey, what should we do with this? What, you know, is this something that's good? We could throw that out there, you know, and see what, how citizens feel about it. So, kind of a great example. And then the other piece is on the agenda. So for City Council, for any other boards and commissions, we can put those, we submit them to Granicus, then we can have each agenda item for feedback. So, they can, you know, we can go the whole agenda. How do you feel about, you know, specific pieces, or however you want to do it? We can break it all out and kind of make it granular. So. And as well, the, this other piece is, there's an iPad app for it as well. So if people in the audience, if council members wanted to have the iPad app, you could see in real time. It's primarily for bigger cities, but at the same time, it will work on our level as well. So, we can see comments, you can see, you know, residents in favor of it or against an item, kind of, in real time, and for each item. So. And then the, just to kind of jump ahead of the cost of it, there's an annual fee, there's no setup fee, but there's an annual cost of about $7,000 for, for this piece. So, I know I'm kind of moving quickly on. If there's any questions, you can feel that, and then I'll move on to the next portion of it.
Mr. Gierbaugh?
Sure.
How is moderation handled? Were you monitors and everything?
Yeah, it's, it's up to our discretion. So if we want to allow, you know, no profanity to have every commenter's idea approved, you can go to that kind of level, so that nothing's automated necessarily. I think there's a benefit, though, to have, because the other option, too, you can have anonymous submissions, or you can require username and logins for, for everybody. So, I think there's a benefit to having people have that kind of openness where they can submit an idea without us having to approve it. They can kind of run with it, if you will, depending on what it is.
Is it mainly textual-based, or does it include, does somebody wants to load up, upload a picture or graphs or anything like that?
They could do that as well, absolutely, yeah. They can submit content to it, so.
Think we can keep moving, Chris?
Okay. The next piece is See Click Fix. This will be, it's actually kind of timely, given the work session earlier, but the primary focus of this is a report management system. So, any open tickets, any open issues, this would be the place to go. This is an actual mock-up of what the app will look like. It's on all major smartphones, so iPhones, Android, BlackBerry, Windows Phone, it's on everything. So it's really powerful to be able to say, any phone that you have with a data plan you're in, you can use it, there's no restrictions. It's absolutely free, and it works really well. I've been using it for a little bit here. So how it works is residents, anyone who downloads it, can start a new report. It automatically has a GPS location, so we'll know if they're in the city or not. If not, we can forward it on. Unfortunately, people in Ann Arbor are submitting reports, but the city of Ann Arbor isn't on it. So, they wouldn't know about it officially, but as an example, we can make sure anyone in the city, we can specifically deal with. So, they can also attach an image, so whatever they're doing, they can take a picture of it. Hey, this, you know, there's graffiti here, this curb is broken, they can take a picture of it, so City Staff knows exactly what they're, what they're referring to. So. Also, it's, it's completely customizable. So, there's no pre-c categories, there's no baked-in questions. We can set up as many questions, categories as we want. We can also tailor them to our ordinances. So, if one thing applies and another doesn't in different communities, we will be able to change that. We can also set up secondary questions. So, in this example, you know, there's graffiti on a wall. Is it first floor or higher floor? We could have, is it private property, is it public property? Is it offensive, is it not? You can code, completely customize it, so. And then also, on the right, you can see the GPS on the map on the app, it automatically submits it. They don't even have to change it, so. The other really nice feature about this, and it's kind of rare in the space, like Todd mentioned, I've done quite a few webinars, and most of them are pretty canned apps. So, they say, oh, this is your city, they plug in your name, they plug in your logo, and you're done. You're kind of playing their field, if you will. The one thing I really like about See Click Fix is that the app buttons are completely customizable. So at the heart of it, it's gonna be a report system, but also, we can add any buttons we want. So with Celtic on last week, oh, that's important, we can put it right up front. Whatever, you know, we feel is necessary at the time, we can have Facebook right there, the Twitter integration is there in the mock-up. We can have almost like a central portal for the city. So, it's kind of nice to have that customization. And this is just the backend kind of showing how easy it is, too. This isn't gonna be something, you know, you have to be a tech guy to do, you know, at any city level, it's very straightforward on how to, you know, run it, how to do it. It's, it's not very, very complicated there. This also, so this is an example of what the website would look like. So we're gonna have a page specifically for just See Click Fix, so we can direct people just to it. Here it is, they can submit tickets on there, they can follow their tickets, they can see current open tickets, so they're not submitting the same thing over and over. By default, everything submitted is public, which also is the benefit, so you don't get the redundant tickets. And also, everything is kept for a week on the website. So if something has been fixed, residents can see it up to a week, and everything is kept on the backend. We can see it for tracking purposes indefinitely. So, it's kind of a good way to, to keep everybody there. It also integrates with Facebook, which I think is really important, especially with the social media presence that we have. It'll integrate completely, people can open tickets just like they could on the website, they can follow them, everything with their Facebook pages. So, and this is an example of the city of Raleigh using it. So, we'll have that integration as well. Just to show kind of the analytics of it, you can track how many days it took to answer a response. You know, what's the typical grass-cutting, you know, response time, how long does it take to, just to kind of tie that up. You can see that all in the backend, there's really deep integration with, you know, any graphing. We can also export the data. So if we want to put in Excel and do our own analytics, we can do that. We don't have to rely on theirs, we can kind of take the data and run with it. So, it's kind of nice. They also have some really kind of neat mapping features. We can integrate neighborhoods if we wanted, so historic districts, for instance, if you want to see, you know, are there a lot of speeders in historic districts? You could have that integration. You could also have the heat map, so where does a certain type of incident happen the most? You would have that capability. You can kind of drill. You can kind of drill down and do some really deep kind of analysis. And then also, from a city perspective, we could have the app installed on our smartphones, and we can also deal with things in the field. So, if there's a broken sidewalk, they repair it, they can take a picture of it, follow up with whoever submitted it. Yep, we took care of that, here's a picture of it, you know, any other concerns, contact, you know, whoever. So, it is very nice. And you can do that from a mobile app, or we, you know, if you have a laptop in the field, they can do that from there as well, so. And then also, for our DPW potentially, not everyone there has a smartphone. So, what this would allow whoever to do, they could print it out, have all the information in their hand when they go out. Where was it? What's the picture of it? Are there, you know, field notes? Did this happen before? Any kind of backstory? You would have that all on the first time, so you don't have to, you know, make multiple trips, so. Really kind of nice. And then also, we currently use Nixle for push notifications based on location, so any alerts and things. See Click Fix isn't quite there yet as far as, as powerful as Nixle is. They don't have a texting component like Nixle does, but they are aware of that deficiency, and they said this is something they're actively pursuing. They want to be able to kind of get in that space and really take over it. So, we have this feature now, and we said they're going to grow that over time, so it's just another, another piece of kind of puzzle there. And then, kind of a couple of quick questions. The one thing I really like about this is there's no advertising as well. Some of the apps, that's how they do it, they have a really low sticker price, but then, when you get into it, oh yeah, there's ads for whatever on there to kind of subsidize that cost. So, they don't have any ads in this, which I really like. So, there's a one-time setup fee of 2,000 there, and then there's unlimited users, which is also nice, and it's an annual fee of 6,000. So, that's where we're looking at now. So, any questions, comments?
Questions for Mr. Schonk? No? Okay. Oh, Mr. Hart, excuse me.
Well, I'm not sure this is a question for Mr. Schonk, but so, all of this information is coming in, who receives it?
Uh, it depends.
Or who would receive it?
Right. So, we can assign roles depending on what it is. So, let's, let's say grass is high, we could assign that to a certain person as opposed to if a curb was broken, we can have it automate to another person. So, we could have it go down to a specific employee, we could assign it to a department. It really depends on what, I guess, what the issue is, so.
So, it can be automated to shoot to the?
Yes, absolutely. So, it's really automated. There's a very nice workflow, it's very automated.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I was going to comment, I think Chris actually used the free portion of See Click Fix.
Right.
Which I set up a couple of years ago, and, you know, as a potential use within the community, didn't get a lot of traction at that point, but somebody had to be a contact, and since it was unofficial, I made myself the contact, so he sent me a picture of some litter, which I then forwarded on to our code enforcement officer, who then forwarded it to the owner of the property, and that just happened.
Last week?
Friday or something, I think. And if, you know, it all, all transpired within the case of a couple of hours, and there was a photograph with it, so everybody knew exactly what it was we were talking about and where it was. So, and I, as I said, that was the free version, I didn't have any idea what all the more upgraded thing could do, but it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah, it works really well.
Mr. Gierbaugh?
I think the See Click Fix would be a great process that we put in place, and I think it's going to track things, because I think this is something that we've been wanting to see, and then basically be able to monitor all the aspects of it, especially from the data standpoint.
Right.
I would like to see us, now, my comment, maybe we're going to talk about this later, but I think that's something, and thanks for your presentation, that I believe this is one of our goals that we are looking at this year, so thank you for investigating this for us.
You're welcome.
Additional questions for Mr. Schonk? Mr. Roth?
I want to thank Chris and all the others who assisted with this, and I'm just wondering what our next step are going to be.
Well, I'm just going to get to that in just a moment.
Okay. Just, I didn't specify a timeline either, so I'd like to have this online. They say generally four to six weeks, so if we get the go-ahead today, you know, it'd be roughly that timeline.
Thank you.
I know that this is a lot to consume, at least initially, but what we're looking for tonight, and of course, Chris or Mr. Campbell can make additional statements, is some sort of consensus from the legislative body as to what they would like to do, what services and products we think would be most appropriate to utilize, with the understanding that much of the cost to acquire these, these services and products would probably come out of that innovation fund which we created in this fiscal year's budget. And then if there is a consensus to move forward, some sort of action item and appropriate corresponding motion would probably come back to us at our first or second meeting in August. Okay? Mr. Burgoyne?
What's the approximate cost?
Depending on the portions, the Granicus portion was, I believe, $7,000 annual fee, and then the See Click Fix was the $8,000 with the 2,000 upfront cost. I budgeted 5,000, but the products at that price point really, I don't think, fit our needs, so the rest would come out of the innovation fund, potentially.
Mr. Campbell, do you have a comment?
No, I'm just going to make a clarification.
So, again, I understand that it was a lot to digest, and Chris did a very good job making the information accessible to those of us who are not experts in this field. But as Mr. Gierbaugh and Mr. Rhodes just indicated, this is one of our councils, this is a council goal to improve accessibility and the way in which we communicate effectively with our residents and our constituents. It's a goal of mine personally as mayor, so I'm very much in favor of moving forward and bringing back an appropriate motion at one of our upcoming council meetings, but I would like to hear from the rest of my colleagues. If I, if I don't, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, Mr. Roth, do you have an opinion on this?
I think it's great.
Okay. Mr. Gierbaugh?
Yeah, I'm fine with the See Click Fix. I'm about the Granicus one for the participation thing. I'm not so sure how that's going to play out, if we may be able to use some other freer-based ones like Facebook or some of the other aspects, that might be a more cost-effective way. But I just need to know more and understand more about the Granicus one.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
And I obviously support moving forward with both of them. I think there will be commensurate man-hour savings that would help offset the costs of utilizing both these programs.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I think it's very clever.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I'd like to see how much they're used and what kind of response we get, but try things out.
Okay. So, Mr. Schonk, Mr. Campbell, it sounds like, at least per Mr. Gierbaugh's request, and I guess I would agree with this to a certain extent, if we could get a little bit more information on Granicus.
Sure.
And then when the action item comes back at either our first or second meeting in August, to Mr. Burgoyne's comment, which is, which is, has a lot of validity, I'd like to know how we would go about either monthly or quarterly receiving some sort of report, monitoring the uses and effectiveness of each of the tools. Okay? Mr. Campbell, did you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to see, I think we have consensus, but is this something that we want to do the See Click Fix and see how that goes? Do we want to push it all at the same time? I just want to make sure.
I'd do it all and try it out.
Okay, all. Mr. Roth, I'm assuming based on your comments, you're in favor of both, correct?
Definitely.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, yes. Okay. Ms. Taha, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Peters, yes. Okay. Mr. Gierbaugh, I'd like to get a little bit more information on Granicus, which I think would be appropriate prior to asking us to vote on a motion to expend public resources for something like this.
Sure.
Okay. I feel like you have consensus now, direction.
Okay.
Any additional comments, questions, Mr. Gierbaugh?
Is there a possibility of getting some information from some of the other communities that you showed in their effectiveness? It'd be interesting to see how they ramped up.
Sure. Yeah.
Onset to when they're actually been using it for a year or so.
Okay.
Mr. Hart?
And to follow up on that, if I could, also, in view of Mr. Burgoyne's comment, to find out how long it took for them to realize that it was working effectively.
Okay.
Because I'm sure that there'll be a period where people will have to get used to it, so we shouldn't try to evaluate it instantly.
Okay.
So, just how long it takes for it to become really effective would be useful, too.
Very good. Okay. Chris, we appreciate your work on this. You had a very thorough presentation. Mr. Campbell, appreciate your assistance as well, and we'll try and gather this information that you all have requested and bring this back as an action either on the 5th or the 19th. Okay? We move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No? Then we move on to the consent agenda. The consent, the following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business, item 13-110, Peoples Park slash 207 Monroe Street. So, it'll be a series of three motions, the first of which is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 10th, 2013 memo from City Manager Campbell, and the July 11th, 2013 letter from Attorney Smith.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Mr. Burgoyne to acknowledge receipt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Taha. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Campbell and Legal Counsel Smith to make comment if that is their wish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, you may recall, this was on the last city council meeting, and a lot of great discussion and comments and questions, and so that's why we, as it's reflected in my memo, we left the motions, the proposed motions as they were, just because there weren't, while there were a lot of comments and questions and clarifications made, there wasn't, you know, one or two individual directions given. So, we want to provide the information that was requested, which one was the easement for the common drive through the current daycare, which that is, you see that in there, that that is in fact in place. And then also, wanted a clear or better, more complete picture, map, site map that we provided as well, and so you can see that, and also, in addition to that, we've added, see the picture with the red line through it? It shows where staff would propose to run the 30-foot setback, for lack of a better term, into the current city property, 207 Monroe Street, and we find the question of the amount of acreage, about 3.61 acres, and that includes those four parcels to the east that are adjacent to the east, along with taking out the .35 acres where that is reflected in that red line, so, but still allowing, one of the objectives, I believe, the council line was to maintain as much, if not all, the frontage along Monroe, which does that. But, so I think, I believe we've provided the information that council requested, and so we're just looking for a direction and...
Are there any questions for City Manager Campbell? No questions? Oh, Mr. Gierbaugh, excuse me.
Just a question on the 30-yard, 30-foot wide access, is that sufficient to then what, basically put kind of like a S-curve drive that goes in if we ever wanted to, to access behind the tennis courts and all that? Or is the intent to put the drive on the other side of the tennis courts?
Well, this would include, this would include, as it shows on the large drawing, 11 by 17, the new parking on the south side of the daycare. So, this would be that, kind of, the pull-in and drop-off, turn around and come back out option, about 30 feet.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I, my question was just to make sure that it was wide enough and we have enough backwards to make sure that we have another drive if we want to get on the other side of it. Because you never know if we're going to have construction or anything in that park, making sure we've got both ways and sufficient access from both sides.
Sure. Well, again, if I understand correctly, you certainly would have the ability currently with, depending on what we do, on the be the east end of that proposed parking lot, any kind of barrier to be able to access down by the basketball court, in between the basketball. I know there's a tree or two there, but as far as construction type equipment, you know, we may have to move a few things, bleachers and those types of things, depending on when, what part of the season we'd be doing any work, but we certainly could make it possible to maneuver down there.
Additional questions for Mr. Campbell? Mr. Burgoyne?
Isn't the 30-foot drive sufficient, the 30-foot piece sufficient for pickup truck and also for handicapped people to be dropped off near home base? And, you know, it, doesn't it provide sufficient access?
We believe, yes, sir, we believe that's what staff believes. That's why we, we thought it should come a little bit further to the west, that's why that, the red line. But, but yes, to answer your question.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you. This, this may be a level of detail you haven't approached it, but, but a question arose in my mind, is there planning for designated spots for bicycle parking in this, in the parking lot or somewhere else in the park? Or that's?
We have not discussed that. I certainly would ask Parks and Rec Director, if she'd like to respond to that, but certainly I think there's, there's room down there to do that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. It hasn't been discussed, but, but definitely, that's, that's one, one thing to consider when we go, go to develop that.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Rhodes?
I was going to say, when we ride our bikes down there, we just end up leaning them up against our posts or something, so it would be nice to have a formal bike place. Mostly what I wanted to do was to thank all of those involved in this dialogue over the last couple of months, to come up with a plan that maximizes the amount of land that's available for sale, and therefore enhances the revenue coming into the city.
Mr. Burgoyne, additional questions for Mr. Campbell?
Just a comment.
Okay.
I like the maps, I like the staff recommendation, makes a lot of sense. There's, I like the report from the attorney that shows that we definitely have the access. They kept an overlapping portion, so you could go from one to the other, made a lot of sense. This was clear, in part B, when we go to the next motion, the way it's stated now is per the recommendation from the commission, but we should say we generally support that as amended by this, that we just keep the 30 feet from, as staff shows it. That's what I'd like in the next motion. It's not, it's not written there yet.
Right. If you'd like to offer that amendment, that would, that would be fine. Are there additional questions for Mr. Campbell? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just one, I know the benefit that we're looking at is basically being able to use some of our Tifa funds or whatever to develop this parking lot and such. Just the way it's laid out and everything, is it sufficient for all the setbacks and everything to potentially, the way you have it with sixty-four foot wide, I'm just looking at the front. I just want to make sure that we don't give or sell the property that we were thinking of using for parking and then end up not being able to use the park, the property that we're keeping for parking. So we're pretty certain that what you proposed here will fit in there within our current ordinances and setbacks and everything else?
Yes, sir, you may recall, this discussion came up, well, actually, about two thousand and ten-ish maybe?
Okay.
About, when the then council was considering purchasing the two oh seven Monroe Street and the possibility of putting the park out, the new park, you know, call it, on the south side of the daycare. And that was, I believe, twenty-seven spaces that then city engineer Ruble and DPW Director Ford Ice had worked out as a proposed. So this is thirty spaces, and so, I mean, this is obviously conceptual, but we do believe that there's ample, there is ample room to put a parking lot there with about thirty spaces.
Okay, and that's what I want to clarify, because that's one of the reasons why I voted to buy the other property. And now that we're kind of done a speculating type thing that, which we shouldn't be doing as a council. But at this approach, I think we're keeping enough land that's gonna help the park and eventually, and now we can trade this over. So, thanks, I just want to make sure that we're not giving something before we have put our eggs in the basket.
Additional questions for Mr. Campell? No? Well, then I'll refer to our Legal Counsel, Mr. Smith. Do you want to make a comment related to your memo dated July the eleventh?
Don't think I need to unless there are questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Legal Counsel Smith? No? Okay. Is there any further discussion related to this first motion? No? Then it's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Tahar to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The second motion is a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the recommendations by the Parks Commission for Peoples Park as outlined in the memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs.
Like to move and adopt with the amendment of making the thirty-foot strip as recommended by staff.
Okay, so your motion will be to approve and adopt all the other subsequent language, and then after Scruggs?
Right, except that the thirty-foot strip kept by the city will be as shown by staff, starting at two thousand, two hundred and five feet from Monroe Street and extending to the east end of the property.
Do you have that written out, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I'll read it again.
Okay, just for our clerk's benefit, and then we'll reread it for the counsel side.
Okay. To move, to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Parks Commission for Peoples Park, generally, I inserted the word generally, as outlined in the memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, except that the thirty-foot strip kept by the city will be as shown by staff, starting at two hundred and five feet from Monroe Street and extending to the east end of the property. That's what staff recommended.
You want to read that back then?
Okay.
So Ms. Rutledge is gonna read the, your amended motion back, Mr. Burgoyne, to make sure we have the verbiage correct, okay?
Okay, to approve and adopt the recommendations by the Parks Commission for Peoples Park, generally, as outlined in the memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, except that the thirty-foot strip kept by the city will be as shown by staff, starting at two hundred and five feet from Monroe Street, extending to the east end of the property.
Correct, okay. All right, so Mr. Burgoyne has moved that amended motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters, okay? Ms. Scruggs, because this is the recommendation of, or at least we are adopting the majority of the, of a recommendation from the Parks Commission, do you care to comment at all?
No, I think that's...
Okay. Okay, is there any discussion related to this motion? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Peters, to approve the amended motion as verbalized by Mr. Burgoyne and then reread by interim Clerk Rutledge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the third motion, this will be a motion to authorize or not authorize city staff to proceed with a request for a proposal for considering a residential real estate broker to assist in the marketing and selling, the, marketing and selling the property at two oh seven Monroe Street.
Move to authorize.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Tahar to authorize, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion, Mr. Burgoyne?
We've already had an RFP for this, and we have a respondent that's ready to go. I would prefer that we just moves, move it ahead. And I think the respondent was Reinhardt, they're willing to do it at six percent. I think they would do, they do this stuff, it's their bread and butter, they would do a good job. I think we should, instead of going through another bureaucratic process, we've already done this, let's just move forward.
I'll move that amendment to be, to warrant to Reinhardt.
Do you want to offer that amendment, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, I would, I would like to authorize the mayor and city clerk to be able to sign a real, a broker's agreement, a standard real estate agreement with the approval of the city attorney, of course, for one year to represent the approximately three point six one acres, the resulting three point six one acres.
No, I think I need to... I think we can, we can just reduce that. I think all you need to do is say is, or I would make, I've made the initial motion anyways, just to move to city staff to proceed with a broker agreement with Reinhardt for considering a residential real estate, somehow just strike that out, that one portion where it says, request for proposal for considering a real estate broker, and to say city staff to proceed with a broker's agreement with Reinhardt.
Okay, I second that.
Mr. Campell?
Would it be, could we, could we reference the specific proposal that they submitted?
Yes.
The terms of the proposed?
As proposed.
Sure. So your amendment, Mr. Gearbaugh, would be to authorize city staff to proceed with a broker's agreement with Reinhardt Realty?
Per their proposal.
Per their proposal. To assist in the marketing and selling of the property at two oh seven Monroe Street.
Correct.
I second that.
You second that as an amendment? Ms. Tahar, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
No, I would not.
Okay. All right, so first we're going to need to discuss and then vote on the amendment, okay? Mr. Gearbaugh, do you care to speak to this issue since you're the mover of the amendment?
I believe that we've gone back and forth on enough with the different brokerage proposals and such that they did submit one, and I think it's appropriate, and they are providing a decent commission. So I think they're a local real estate agent, they proposed. At this point, I'd like to move this forward, we've been moving on it for six months.
Okay, Mr. Burgoyne, do you care to comment at all as a seconder?
I agree exactly with what he said.
Ms. Tahar?
I disagree, because the, the RFP that Reinhardt responded to was for a commercial property. And so there may be a number of realtors in the area who hand, who are, who handle residential properties who might have been interested in submitting a proposal for this property, who didn't because the initial RFP was for a commercial property. So that's my reason for not, not agreeing to the amendment.
Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I just don't see the reason for delay. I think Reinhardt is a very capable firm in this area, and I think when they responded, they knew that there were residential and commercial portions. Reinhardt has a commercial side which, of which other firms are maybe stronger on the commercial side, but Reinhardt is strong on the residential side. This, this makes sense, they've already responded to an RFP, I don't think we need to delay.
Additional discussion? Okay, they were voting on an amendment to the third motion offered by Mr. Gearbaugh, seconded by Mr. Burgoyne, to proceed with broker's agreement with Reinhardt Realty per their proposal. Is that correct, Ms. Rutledge?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so that's four in favor of the amendment, two against, the motion passes. So now we proceed with the final motion, which includes that amendment, and that was moved by Tahar and seconded by Roth. Is there discussion? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just want to make sure when we're selling this that, are we going to have a reverse, an option to take it back or whatever? Because my concern is that how we ever sell this, that we want it to be developed, we don't want it just to be another piece of land that's just sitting there that's, yes, it'll be off the tax rolls, but I'd rather see the investment. And that was one of the reasons why we would be turning this back over, is to see a bigger benefit for the city than just sitting there. So whatever happens, I just would like to conclude in whatever arrangement we do that there's some type of requirement of some nature, no different than what we do for industrial parks or whatever.
Mr. Campell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, as you, as Mr. Smith has alluded in other items, you know, we can put whatever requirements, you know, in any agreement the council wants to, and as long as the other side is agreeable, then that could be, certainly could be there, so...
I just want to be forward with this, so the understanding is there is that we have those kinds of expectations so that we aren't at the last minute trying to negotiate something without having been forward about it.
If there's a consensus, if, I mean, I don't know if we want to get into the, if council wants to get into that kind of detailed discussion or not, but, but certainly if there's a consensus, we can, you know, we can put that out front and center and let the, you know, the listing agents know that that, that is gonna be a requirement.
It might be more prudent, rather than making a fixed requirement in that regard, simply to let the agent know, and so we list it on the card that the council will consider things other than price in determining whether to accept an offer such as a guarantee for development and/or impose a reverter.
Okay.
I just want to make one comment related to this motion, first of which I was somewhat indifferent to the amendment that Mr. Gearbaugh offered and that Mr. Burgoyne seconded. However, I did vote in favor because I'm very much in favor of proceeding and getting something done. It's abundantly clear to me that no one can accuse this council of rushing this decision or doing anything in haste as it relates to the two oh seven Monroe Street property. In fact, I think the proposal that we're voting on this evening is, pleases me very much. I suspect that this parcel will be acquired, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, by somebody who wants to do some sort of residential development on the site. Of course, transitioning this property from public ownership to private ownership will benefit the, the community by adding it to the tax rolls. Also part of, I think one of our goals as a council is to utilize any vacant space that exists within the municipal boundaries of the city to see some sort of residential, commercial or industrial development, because we understand it's in our long-term best interest. I also think that in discussing and reviewing this proposal, I think there's also been a real profound benefit to Peoples Park in this proposed additional parking adjacent to the tennis courts. I think will, will benefit the users of, of one of our real, unique and one of our nicer parks in the city. So I'm very much in favor of this motion, and of course urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this proposal. Additional comments, Mr. Rhodes?
I also would like to support this proposal, excuse me. And while the site is not directly in our downtown, it is close enough to it that individuals who would choose to live in this, in this site once it's, assuming it's developed for residential, which I'm sure it would be, can walk to downtown, and so that will help our downtown location. And I would also hope that whenever this eventually does come up to the planning commission that as dense a, as dense of a development as can possibly fit in here without being out of place would, would be approved so that we can maximize the number of families who can live here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Additional comments? No? Okay, then it's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Tahar and Mr. Roth to authorize with the amendment that Mr. Gearbaugh offered and Mr. Burgoyne seconded, that's already been approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business, item thirteen dash one twelve. This is Celine Main Street Community Signs. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen memo from Bob Rosenberg on behalf of Celine Main Street regarding replacing the Cool City sign with the Celine Main Street Community Signs, and to authorize or not authorize Celine Main Street to replace the current Cool City signs with the Celine Main Street Community Signs.
Move to authorize.
Been moved by Mr. Gearbaugh to authorize, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Rosenberg, do you care to make any additional comments? No? Very good. Any discussion?
Just glad to see current signs replace old obsolete ones, so we don't need to add any more signs, so if one can replace the same, that's great, thanks.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Plus, I, of course, recognize the logo, the sign, and it's good to see it in our community.
Again, just to reiterate a point that Mr. Rosenberg made earlier, we are still a cool city. However, that program, which was something that our former governor, Jennifer Granholm, believed in very much, is, I think, as Mr. Rosenberg put it appropriately, defunct, to say the very least. So they're not really timely or appropriate, and acknowledging the fact that we are a Main Street community with these signs, I think, is, is a good thing. And so they'll be a nice addition to our downtown. So thank you for, for being proactive and requesting this, this change.
If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved and seconded to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item thirteen dash one fourteen, this is DTE Franchise Agreement, Ordinance Number seven forty-nine. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July tenth, two thousand and thirteen confidential memo from Attorney Smith and to acknowledge receipt and reading of Ordinance Number seven forty-nine, DTE Electric Company Electric Utility Franchise. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar.
I'm sure.
Okay, Mr. Campell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, and then I'll turn over to Mr. Smith, they've done the lion's share of the heavy lifting. But this is an item that has, I believe the original one was, or this last one was approximately twenty years, I believe, for the franchise agreement between the city and DTE. And so it has come up for renewal, and working with Clark Hill, our city attorneys, we had proposed a couple different additions, language, and they were going back and forth. And as you read in Mr. Smith's memo, the backs in force, and I know he's gonna talk about that in more detail, but I think, I think we have come to a reasonable, hopefully, proposal that we're bringing forward to city council, so if anyone has any questions for me, I would turn over to Mr. Smith.
Any questions for Mr. Campell? No? Mr. Smith?
We had some extended back and forth with DTE regarding a number of provisions. Most of them we came to agreement on pretty quickly. DTE requested that the city include an indemnification provision that basically said that if any work that the city did damaged DTE equipment, that we would indemn, fully indemnify DTE for that. Well, that would have the effect of waiving governmental immunity, and we thought that that was inappropriate, particularly since there's no franchise fee or anything paid for this, so we didn't understand why we would do that. If governmental immunity was ineffective in the particular circumstance, DTE would be left to its remedies and our insurance carrier would handle it. The other thing that we have been insisting on in these franchise agreements with DTE consumers and others is that there be a provision included that if the franchisee, DTE in this case, pays a franchise fee to any Michigan community, we would get a similar franchise fee. DTE didn't want to go for that. And so we suggested then having a franchise of a very short duration so that if DTE subsequently agreed to pay a franchise fee to someone, we wouldn't have to go without a franchise fee that they're paying to another Michigan community for fifteen or thirty years, whatever the length of the franchise might be. We suggested a one-to-three-year agreement, DTE agreed to five, and that's what we put in.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for our legal counsel? Mr. Rhodes?
Not necessarily advocating this, but what happens if we don't sign a franchise agreement? Would DTE quit providing electricity to the city and its...
Well, technically, they're, it's illegal for them to provide electricity without a franchise, so I'm not sure they would quit providing electricity, but they need this to make sure that they are dotting i's and crossing t's, and it's probably a condition of a lot of their financing and insurance and other kinds of things to make sure that they've got the legal authorization to sell power within the city lands.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gearbaugh?
So with us resigning this franchise agreement, do we have any more leverage in dealing with some of the issues that we've had lately with, you know, power concerns where we've lost, maybe potentially had a motherboard burnout at our water plant and some of the blips that we've had in the power? And there's been some concerns with some areas that are going out when there's storms, so there may need to be some more trimming of trees and such. Is this something within this agreement that we can hold them to?
Well, we haven't got anything specifically in this agreement as to those issues. And of course, whenever you're looking at power, there are gonna be some fluctuations in power that they can't control. As to the tree issue, we can address that. If you wanted to address it within an ordinance, we could do that. You can address it either within the franchise ordinance itself, as we have in some communities, or with a... or with a separate ordinance regarding the trimming of trees by utility companies, which we've done in other communities.
Okay. Because my concern is just that sometimes we've had some ongoing concerns, and that usually with a franchise agreement, we should be able to address the service and what type of service we're getting, so hopefully that we can look at that.
And this agreement does have a short enough duration of only five years, so that if the issues don't get addressed, you can certainly address it next time.
Okay. Because we're experiencing them now, so I want to make sure they're getting addressed now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Additional questions from council members? Mr. Campbell, do you make care to make additional comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in reference to Mr. Gierba's concerns, staff, including myself, DPW Director Ford Ice, and Wastewater and Water Superintendent Skoll, we met with DTE folks this past week, last week, and to discuss those very issues of some of these intermittent power fluctuations or power blips. And actually, it was a pretty informative meeting, and I didn't use the exact, the proper terminology that they call them, but the, between the longer, the five-plus-minute outages versus the less-than-five minutes. And so, they recorded last year, I believe, they said two of the five-minute, five-plus-minute ones, and that's still within the good range, if you will. If five or more of those a year, then that's considered poor service. And then the less-than-five minutes, which are usually in duration of about 30 seconds to a minute, because we have had some concerns. I've had a couple calls from residents that we're trying to help address, and one of them is what they're calling an anomaly, and they're, they give data, of course, they do smart meters and such, and where essentially we're probably, potentially a, maybe a, a branch falls on the wire, and the fuse opens, and then it'll try and close up to three times, and hopefully that limb falls off. Am I doing all right so far? And so, so, and if it, after that third time, if it hasn't been able to, it hasn't fallen off, hasn't closed, then it would stay open, and a crew would come out. But apparently, there's analysis that the, as they call it, the Department Downtown, is how they referenced it, they analyze the data, and they're, they're, they're trying to push to get that data so they can try, because it's, they've had, we've had four of these short intermittent, what I would call intermittent, the minute or less ones. We had four, it was end of, it was, I believe it was Memorial Day weekend into the, into June a little bit, the day we had four of those, right at about the, between 8:30 and 9:00 a.m., 8:30 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and they're trying to figure out what through, hopefully through this analysis, that's part of it. They also communicated to us that they do have a detailed tree trimming program in and around Celine, even though maybe we haven't seen a lot of their trucks. I mean, we see them parked, of course, and they do do help us with some bartering with service and whatnot, tree trimming. But they assure us that they are, there's extensive tree trimming going on for the Celine area, and we also, for our concerns at our water treatment plant with some of these, they're going to be helping us try and track down, and hopefully we can improve on, so we don't continue to lose the variable frequency drives and such.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any additional questions related to this first motion? No? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Then it's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the subsequent motion, this will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt said ordinance number 749 as submitted.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Second.
Moved by Gierba to approve and adopt, and seconded by Councilman Peters. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving and adopting the said ordinance number 749 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 13-15, City Clerk Search. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 10, 2013 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to make a conditional offer of employment for the position of City Clerk to Teresa Terry Royal, conditioned upon satisfactory completion of a background investigation, physical and drug screen, with a starting salary of $54,598. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge receipt and to make a conditional offer.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Tahar to acknowledge receipt and make a conditional offer. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gierba. Mr. Campbell, do you care to discuss your memo of July the 10th?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tell you, and certainly, we have a few members from the selection team here, including obviously Mayor Pro Tem Tahar, so I would invite any comments that if I miss anything, or if somebody just wants to add something, but we were blessed, I thought we received 26, well, let me back up. Council charged this team, the selection team, to bring a recommendation forward, to recommend the finalist to, as the, as the new city clerk. And so, we received 26 applications, very strong candidate pool, very strong, and we came up with Pool A and Pool B, and didn't have to, we don't believe we had to go down to Pool B. We interviewed six very strong candidates. One of, is our interim clerk, Amy Rutledge, who, she and I have had a couple conversations. She did a fantastic job. But again, we had some very strong candidates, and we, it was a two-part, it was an oral board for the first part of it, and then the second part, were some written, to see some of the writing samples and how they, and also some procedural questions, how they would do certain things. And so, not to belabor this, we, it was unanimous on the selection team, Teresa Royal, she goes by Terry, who's currently the Clerk Treasurer for the City of Chelsea, and we've received many, as we called and checked references, of course, this is, that would, of course, be preliminary to the in-depth background check that we would do for any finalist for a conditional offer, but very glowing. I know Chief Rinnick was at an event with Chief Toth from Chelsea, and he said, hey, I tell you, you can't, you're going to be very, very happy. So, but it was, again, she, with her experience, and we just believe she had that, you know, you're looking for the, at this level, looking also for a solid fit for the organization, and we all believe that that was, that she's going to be a solid fit, and we'd be very, very happy with her. So, having said that, so, Mayor, if any other members, if they had anything they wanted to add to that.
Mr. Har?
Yes. Yes, I would, I would also say I was, I was very impressed with the, the number of applications we received, and the qualifications really of almost all of the candidates or the applicants were, were quite interesting. And I also think that the process that we used was very important. We had written material to evaluate, we had the in-person interviews, and then the, the written boards, the exercises, the scenarios we gave them. And all three of those were really critical, I think, in, in coming to a final decision, and Ms. Royal was, was clearly the top choice when we looked at the, at all of the aspects. So, I'm, I'm very pleased that she was in the pool, and I hope that she will accept the offer if we make it.
Treasurer Bennett, Chief Rinnick, DPW Director Ford Ice, I know you're all on the task force, do you care to comment at all? No? Okay. Well, to the three of you, and then to City Manager Campbell, and Mayor Pro Tem Tahar, as well as City of Sturgis Clerk Treasurer Ken Rhodes, I think on behalf of myself, the mayor, and the rest of council, and all the citizens of Celine, we thank you for your service and your willingness to participate as members of this hiring task force. It's a very important service, and we appreciate the, the time that you took out of your already busy schedules to, to participate in that endeavor. So, thank you very much. Okay? So, this motion's been moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierba. Is there additional comments or questions? No? Okay. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, commissioning committee reports. Mr. Peters?
I'd just say that the 2013 Celtic Festival was quite successful this year. We had great weather and a great turnout, large crowd in town and down to park. The Maston Mayhem was a great success. People really enjoyed it, a lot of smiling faces. It was a great addition to the festival and hope, with the symbiotic relationship, we can keep that going. It was really, really a lot of fun. As usual, I heard a lot of comment from people, mostly from people, or a lot of people from out of the community, on how beautiful Celine is, and how well-kept the homes and the yards are, how beautiful Mill Palm Park is, and several commented on how nice the people are. So, it was a good day for Celine, and thanks all the hard-working volunteers to help make that happen.
I just want to elaborate on that for just a moment. I appreciate you sharing your perspective on the 18th Annual Celtic Festival, Mr. Peters, and I should first acknowledge that Councilmember Peters is our council liaison to the executive committee for the Celine Celtic Festival, and has served in that capacity for a number of years. And it's certainly true to me, in the eyes of many, that Celine Celtic Festival would not be what it is today without Mr. Peters' leadership. So, thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
The second thing is, similar to Mr. Peters', I received a number of comments from people at the park on both Friday and Saturday. It was an outstanding festival, I think one of the best. The weather agreed with us, and the Celtic Festival Committee continues to, to add new amenities and new attractions to the event. I had a woman come up to me from Illinois who said she wouldn't miss the event. She comes every year, and she thought it was the best Celtic festival so far.
Two people from Pennsylvania remarked how beautiful Celine is, so it has an impact.
Good. Yeah. So, it truly is a special event, and we're just glad that it was a success. So, thank you. Additional commission or committee reports. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee has issued a call for sculpture. These will be for, this is for sculptures to replace the ones on loan to us in the current sculpture walk. We have a flyer. There will be some available at the desk at City Hall, and if anyone knows sculptors who have outdoor appropriate works, especially those maybe all ready to go, please do let them know of this opportunity. We have a Facebook page, Celine Arts and Culture, where the, the call for sculptor, sculpture is posted, and we've distributed flyers in the community as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. If you have not already, you may want to share that information with Mr. Shank. I don't believe he's still here, but he could put it out on the city's Facebook page as well.
We're working on that.
Good. The other thing, as it relates to the Arts and Culture Commission, I do believe you still have two vacancies.
That's correct.
I did speak to an individual who has a background more in performing arts. She's a local attorney. I gave her an application, and I suspect she'll be turning it in in the next few days, so we'll have the opportunity to appoint her at our first meeting in August on the 5th. That means you still have a vacancy, so for any of you who will be, any of you in the audience, or any of those who will be listening or watching at home, and you're interested in serving your community in this capacity, I encourage you to go on the city's website, or contact the Clerk's Office, and get an application and submit it. Okay? Additional commission committee reports. Mr. Gierba?
Planning Commission, this past week, met to discuss the expansion at Bush's in the front, their entrance, and unanimously passed that. That's going to be a new approach. They're going to move things around so that benefit maybe for their customers and such, and I think it'll be a better approach for everyone. And the other thing, we talked with our planning company, and Doug Luhan is going to be looking at the sign concerns that everyone had to address here, and what they're basically going to do is have him cut, bring together a group of chamber and other individuals that want to consider, and discuss what issues may be a concern, and not necessarily look at just rewriting the whole ordinance, but really finding out and looking at what issues are there, and to see if maybe there's just something that we have to tweak, or just re-understand it a different approach.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Additional commission or committee reports? No? About reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I just wanted to repeat something that Mr. Rosenberg had mentioned earlier, and that is this row downtown meeting, which is taking place this Wednesday, starting at 6:00 o'clock at Stone Arch Events in our downtown. This is very important that we get a broad representation of folks from the community who will come in and hopefully offer their comments and suggestions about what they would like to see Celine's downtown be in the future. Very important, so we hope to have standing room only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Other reports and announcements. Mr. Roth?
Saturday, the 20th, the Celine Area Historical Society will be doing a program commemorating 150th anniversary of Henry Ford. We have a presentation of Henry Ford's involvement in the city of Celine. We also, there'll be cars there that be free, it's free admission. There will be a program where a person will be acting out the role of Henry Ford.
Very cool.
So, it's a good event, starts at 11, goes to 3. It's free, so let's hope everybody can enjoy themselves there.
What's the date one more time?
It is this Saturday, the 20th.
At Renshler Farm?
At Renshler Farm.
Okay. Very good. Any other announcements? Ms. Tahar?
Yes. This year in October will be the 10th anniversary of the signing of our Sister City Agreement with Lindenberg, Germany, and a small group of officials from Lindenberg will be traveling to Celine in October for, they will include the mayor, and the, the, the person in their Sister City organization who is responsible for the relationship with Lindenberg, plus the president of the, Lindenberg's overall Sister City Committee. So, we are in the very beginning stages of planning a celebration ceremony here at City Hall on Sunday, I believe the date is October 13, and you'll be hearing more about this later, but we certainly hope that city council members will be present at that time, as well as members of the public. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Har. Any other announcements? Okay, then we move on to preview, or review, excuse me, of the presentation for our upcoming town halls on our city finances. You should have all received in your packet a printed-out version of our PowerPoint, which our city treasurer and finance director worked diligently on, and then Ms. Bennett and Ms. McDonough met with City Manager Campbell and I to review it. Some minor changes were made. Again, just to give you all a little bit of context, this PowerPoint, it will, is meant to supplement information that has already been provided, and information that will be provided at those two town halls on the 25th and 6th of August, which is that economic forecast or economic history pamphlet that we approved at our last council meeting. So, that information will be provided at those two town halls, in addition to the information that will be expressed via PowerPoint. Just a little bit more history or context, not history, but just want to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going to happen on each one of those town halls, is there will be comment cards available, there will be that brochure available when people walk in, we'll encourage people to sign in. I will give a brief, share some brief opening remarks, and then turn it over to Mr. Campbell, who will share some sentiments, and then it will be turned over to our Treasurers Department, Ms. Bennett and Ms. McDonough, to go over the trifold, as well as the PowerPoint, and then open it up to questions and comments at the end, and maybe, hopefully, we'll have a little bit more of a dialogue at that point. So, Ms. Bennett, if you want to come up maybe and briefly comment, and then if there are suggested changes or modifications that council would like to see, you know, I'll entertain those, and then see if we have a consensus on how best to move forward. So, Ms. Bennett?
Okay. So, as Brian outlined, the pamphlet that we've worked so hard on and you guys approved does, basically what we were trying to do there is to show the impact during the economic recession that everyone, so we kind of wanted just to get some bullet points and some really quick factual information. And so, then at the town hall, we, that town hall meeting after Brian does his introduction, what we wanted to show is more how we have changed as a city, you know, where we've went over the past couple of years, how we've, how we, what we did when the times were good, what we've done when things weren't so bad, and what our plans are for going forward, and understanding that during that timeframe, we had new construction, we had all, you know, record highs, we had proposal, tax proposal, legislation changes with Proposal A, and we've fared through all of that with, you know, pretty, I think we've, we've fared very strong. And now that, you know, we're moving forward, the economy is picking back up, the city's taking these proactive steps, and we're going to start rebuilding, and so that we can prepare for what else happens.
The future.
What else, what they, what we get dealt with. So, that's why this is, you know, this is kind of a little bit different, but we're just briefly going to try to just show some pictures, and just kind of talk about, basically, like I say, the good, the bad, and the reality, where we were, where we've been, and where we're going. and the reality, where we were, where we've been, and where we're going.
Let me start with, are there any questions relating to the slides? And once we get done with questions, then we'll get more into comments or suggested changes. Mr. Rhodes, do you have a question for Treasurer Bennett?
I do. Thank you. On the slide titled "Operating a City," there's, under demand of service, there's a number for new residents and commercial buildings, and also relating, the next page, cutting the cost, the reduction of employees, and it's not clear to me what the time period is that's being addressed by those categories.
Okay. Well, we were, it's through the whole, what I tried to do within this is to kind of keep it within the same timeframe, so from 2003 through the current year. This whole slideshow was a different timeframe. And then the costs that we've cut are the costs that we've cut as we outlined in the brochure, the numbers of employees and stuff like that, because we didn't really start cutting employees until the 2000, when we started stop, or 2006, when we stopped replacing people and things like that.
So, the number of, say, new residents, 1,149, that is from 2002 to current?
That was the information. I just did a total of new construction from what the assessor was able to pull for me from her files, and that total actually is from year 1991, when Catherine was pulling, and I just did a real quick total on the number of residents.
So, it's from '91?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that seems a little, that's a big misleading there.
Well, I guess what I was, well, what I was trying to show was that, well, I thought it was 2002, but then I was referencing my information. What I'm trying to show is that we were at a building high time. You know, we've put on a lot of construction in the past, and I will tweak that number to run in conjunction with the dates of 2002. Thank you for bringing that.
What initiated my question was the page right above, a general fund balance starts at 2000 through 2012, and so I wasn't sure of the time period that we were addressing with all these statistics, but it seems like we should be uniform. So, thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty easy fix, Mr. Bennett, if we can just hone those the figures that are enumerated on the "Operating a City" page to sort of correlate with the "General Fund Balance" page, that would be, I think that would be, that'd be good.
Yeah. And I am using stuff that was already existing, the 2000, the fund balance page is out of the audit, so I was just using numbers that were there, so, but I will define the timeline. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Do you have additional questions, Mr. Rhodes?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Gierba, did you have a question?
No, I disagree with Mr. Rhodes, just to show the timeline on the top and actually show the dates, so that we're specific, so everyone understands what we're presenting.
Very good point.
Additional questions? Do you have a question for Ms. Bennett, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, first, I really appreciate the long timeline. Asking to have about a dozen years shown, and that's good. Would it be possible, though, for every page to have the same timeline, like if it's tax year 2002 through tax year 2013, which would be, you know, FY, or tax year 2001 probably, if you start in FY02 through FY14, could you use the same number of years on every page, and then when you add things up, like operating a city, the number of new residents, or whatever, it would all correspond? Would that be possible?
Sure. Yes.
Additional questions? Comments? Okay. Then we'll make those two changes then.
Mm-hmm.
I think we'll be good to go then. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, Treasurer Bennett. And again, we encourage everyone up at the dais here, if your schedules permit, to attend on both the 25th and 6th. That goes for those of you in the audience, and those of you who will be viewing this meeting at home, and your comments and perspectives will be greatly appreciated during the dialogue and Q and A portion of those town halls. Okay? If there's nothing further on our two upcoming town halls, we'll move on to a personal property tax update from our legal counsel, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, as you're all aware, at the end of the last year, the legislature enacted personal property tax relief. That calls for a number of things. There's a small taxpayer exemption that starts phasing in in 2014 for parcels that are under $40,000 in taxable value, under $80,000 in true cash value. Commercial and industrial parcels of that size will be tax exempt. Personal property tax abatements for industrial personal property will be extended until the exemptions take effect. There's a phase in of complete industrial personal property tax exemptions for qualified manufacturing personal property, so that's not warehousing, and it's not other kinds of things unless it's related to a manufacturing operation. And that will start with personal property that was new after 2012 will become exempt in 2016. In 2016, there will also be a phase in of personal property that's 10 years old or older that will also become exempt. So, by 2022, all personal, industrial personal property that's eligible, manufacturing personal property will be exempt from taxation. Local governments are to receive replacement revenues from two sources. There's an essential services assessment that will be levied against industrial and commercial real property on which personal property is located that's exempt from the personal property tax for not the small parcel exemption, but the other two exemptions. And that will be an assessment for essential services, which are defined as police, fire, ambulance, and jails. There's a set aside from use tax revenues that will cover a reimbursement of about 80% of non-essential service property, personal property taxes. The legislation did not fully address some issues. There are technical corrections that have to be made for the proper implementation and timing. There are some definitional changes that are being made. There was a need to address false claims of exemption, and what happens if somebody falsely claims an exemption, and what kind of penalties get assessed. There are potentials for abuses of the small parcel exemption that are being addressed. The package didn't address tax increment financing at all, so that's being addressed in the cleanup legislation. And there were concerns expressed by the Michigan Association of Counties, the Michigan Township Association, and Michigan Municipal League regarding some of the legal issues involved, and those are also being addressed. This necessitated follow-up legislation. The lieutenant governor assembled a team to do that. It started with a group of about 45 people, including representatives from business and representatives from local governments, and representatives from the House, the Senate, the Legislative Service Bureau, and Department of Treasury. That group was too big to do actual drafting, so that was winnowed down to a drafting group of about a dozen people. There were three people outside of state government invited to participate in that, a lawyer from Ford Motor Company, the Dearborn City Assessor, and me. It now also includes some additional personnel from the MTA MAC and MML. The initial aim was to have a package of bills ready in April. That slipped to June, and we're now looking at September. The difficulty is that it's a very complex problem to address, both getting the exemptions right, and then getting the replacement revenues right. There will be a package of probably close to 20 bills, because each of the statutes that allow for tax increment financing will have to be amended as part of the legislation. So, it's complicated. We're getting to the final issues. I originally advised this community and others we represent not to adopt or approve new tax abatements until we saw how this legislation was going to play out. We don't know exactly how it's going to play out yet, but I'm fairly certain at this point that it will not affect industrial facilities tax abatements. So, if you want to go ahead and approve those, that's fine, barring some really unforeseen change in what's being proposed. There shouldn't be any adverse effects. Tax abatements you approve now will continue to be in effect for real property for whatever duration you set. Tax abatements for personal property will continue to be in effect until 2016, when the new personal property tax exemption takes effect. There's a separate question in your tax abatement agreements. Your tax abatement agreements contain a unique provision that says, if personal property tax reform cuts personal property taxes by 50% or more, the council can decide to terminate the abatement. Quite frankly, the state frowns on that, on provisions like that, because the state's making up the lost personal property tax, either through the use tax reimbursement or through the essential services assessment. So, the state's view is, really, you're not out anything. Secondly, the taxpayer is still going to pay the essential services assessment, still going to be paying real property taxes, so, and you won't have lost only about probably 20% of your personal property tax revenue from that taxpayer, so it's not as if the city's going to suffer a 50% loss. So, I guess my recommendation going forward is that you might not want to enforce that provision, and if you adopt new abatements with new agreements, you might want to remove that provision. Now, the only danger is that there's a vote in August of 2014, and if the vote does not approve the property tax relief package, then it will go back to the legislature, and my guess is that the legislature in lame duck would at least consider repealing personal property tax even without a replacement package. I don't know as though it would do that, but it came close in December to doing exactly that.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Why not leave our provision in? Doesn't hurt and could help us. Just not act on it if we don't lose anything.
That's up to you. I don't make the policy. I'm simply...
I'd want to leave the provision in.
That's fine.
As a safety backup.
It's that issue specifically, Mr. Burgoyne, is not one that I'm passionate about one way or the other. I do agree with the comments made by our legal counsel on what I add, which would come from more of a political perspective, is that there's also some symbolism involved, and I think it would be, send a terrible message to some leaders in our business community to offer an abatement and then pull it back. I think that would be, quite frankly, in many respects devastating. So, I think there's that added component that sort of compounds the situation that this body would need to be cognizant of.
Although the industrial leaders have never balked at it before, they've always understood that if the city gets its legs cut out from under it, then, you know, they shouldn't just one-sided get...
I certainly don't disagree. I think, however, there's a distinction between having verbiage in an agreement and having verbiage in an agreement that you have a history of executing. And so, I think there's some level of confidence currently, because we have a long track record of not utilizing that clawback, but...
It's, it's, it's not a clawback. It's not providing an abatement if the industries no longer pay personal property taxes. That's never happened before.
Sure.
And we've always had it in there. It's never been an issue. It's been a safety feature for the city, and the industries actually have understood that, and they've considered us, you know, pretty smart to put a safety feature.
We can, of course, discuss it and have a dialogue about it in the future. Again, my issue is not so much with the inclusion of that verbiage in the agreements. It's just from a government-to-customer perspective. I think that would be devastating in many ways to execute that, but that's my opinion.
To execute it?
Yes. That was, that's my perspective on the issue.
Yeah. I was not talking about executing it. I was talking about leaving the provision in new IFT agreements as a safety feature, in case it was needed by the city.
Right. No, I get that.
Just as a safety feature.
Yep. I get that. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith related to his update on the personal property tax bill package that's forthcoming in the legislature? Mr. Gierba?
Yeah, just point of clarification. So, you're saying they're setting aside just 80% of, for funding our personal property tax at this point. Can we use that as a figure in an attempt to try and basically go ahead and take a 20% adjustment on what we do for our future projections and such?
Yeah. For essential services, you should be able to get back 100%. For non-essential services, what's happened is that they're setting aside from the use tax, a given pool of money every year that Treasury is, has run figures on multiple times, and is estimating will reimburse the loss at about 80% for non-essential services. So, you know, the Treasury will be running some more figures again as the legislation finishes up, because there's some tweaking that's occurring, and the administration's looking at the sufficiency of those funds. So, yes, I've talked with Ms. Bennett, and we're using 80% as a rough guess. Treasury also has a spreadsheet that hasn't been updated with some of the proposed tweaks, but as of the last year was fairly accurate and allowed for some good projections as well.
Okay. I'm just saying that we should be looking at, already starting to adjust our projections forward.
Absolutely.
Right. And I think we've done that in this budget.
Yeah. And evidently, to that point, Mr. Gierba, because what you're really addressing is being proactive as opposed to reactive. If you look further down on your agenda, we have tentative work meetings scheduled for both August 5th and 19th. My assumption currently is that one of those two work sessions will take place, but not both, and the intent is to meet with the Special Projects Commission to discuss abatements and our future policy. Again, to play more of a proactive game as opposed to a reactive game, considering a lot of the information that our legal counsel has shared this evening. Mr. Roth, did you have a question for our legal counsel?
Yes, I do. I was just wondering, at what level does this essential service tax start for, is size of company or property owner? Is it at the higher level, or is it at a very basic?
No, it will be for any industrial real property that has on it, actually industrial or commercial real property potentially, that has on it industrial personal property that's exempt under the new personal property exemption, or under the existing personal property exemption. So, any business that has one of those exemptions applying to it beginning in 2016 could be specially assessed.
But only over 80,000 market value? Under 80,000, you don't get reimbursed, right?
If the total amount of their personal property is less than 80,000 in market value, that's correct. If the total amount of their personal property exceeds 80,000, then, yes.
Additional questions?
Well, I'm just thinking, in reality, it's not going to help us out too much, because we've only have a few that's over 80,000.
We have, we have a lot. We have about 30 million.
Yeah.
Probably, probably, probably any industry, most every industry has probably got personal property over 80,000 in value, because any industrial equipment, even a few forklifts and so forth, may push it to there.
You don't need to invest in too much personal property to get enough value in excess of 80,000.
Understand that the small parcel exemption, the estimate is that it accounts for about 70% of the personal property tax parcels, but they pay about 10% of the personal property taxes. So, the idea is that this may clear out... So the idea is that this may clear out a number of taxpayers, but relatively small tax loss in comparison.
Mr. Burgoyne, you have an additional question?
Yes. Wouldn't it be reasonable to continue to provide tax abatements through 2014 to wait to see how the vote goes and if reimbursement is coming and so forth? And just assume that, I would assume that the vote will probably succeed because most people will be backing it and promoting it. So this process probably will proceed the way you're describing.
At this point, I'm not seeing anything in the legislation that trips that up. The only possibility would be if the vote wasn't approved in 2014. So I guess I'm recommending that to the extent you choose to grant abatements, grant abatements, and you can grant them for real property and it will be unaffected, and personal property, that's up to you.
And again, Mr. Burgoyne, we'll be having a work meeting where we'll thoroughly discuss that issue. Are there any additional questions for our legal counsel related to this issue specifically? No? Okay, then we move on to water bills slash meter readings. That was an issue that was brought up during the public comment period at our last meeting. And I believe most of us, if not all of us, had received an email from one or two residents also verbalizing or articulating, excuse me, some concerns. So I ask that this be added as a discussion item at this meeting, and we have our DPW director and city treasurer to address it. So please.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start since the water bill is usually what gets to the person's attention. We have, as Mr. Fordyce provided you, well, we have multiple different, multiple ways of reading the meters, but we have about 400 meters out there that still have a reader, which is on the outside of the house. And when those get spider webs and dirt buildup and all of that, they can start to slow and sometimes stop. In our department, when we see, we send the DPW out to do meters, and then they come back in and we see a read that doesn't fall within the range of their normal consumption, we'll send the DPW back out for what we call a reread. Typically in the past, the city policy has been that in the September billing, we have an inside and an outside read, which meant that the readers would go knock on the door and try to get inside to make sure that the meter is actually running in conjunction with the meter. What we have, what has been brought to your attention is when that reader has stopped or slowed. If it's a zero, if it stops, it's pretty obvious. You know, you've got a family of five living here, and we've had two quarters with no consumption, there's a problem. And you, you know, you knock on that door, and the DPW, between the water billing clerk and the Department of Public Works, we really do follow through on those people and we get that taken care of. What happens more often than not is it just starts to slow, and you gradually see the consumption go down. In the event of 396 Berkshire, we had during that same time, a family, a divorce, an empty house, a single person. So the, you know, the lower consumption really didn't warrant anything on the water billing, the meter, the reader, the water billing clerk's radar to say that there was a problem at that house. The policy that, I don't know how long it's been in place, is that when we do a final read, when someone comes in and does a final read, which does take time for us to prepare. You can't call in the day of a closing and say, "We need a final read," because we have to send a Department of Public Works employee out there and we have to calculate a bill. So what can happen is, and Jeff has enforced, that they get an inside and an outside read. And when the two don't match, we build the difference. And we have sense with this billing, because we, when this was brought to our attention of this high consumption, the city, myself, I was requested that the city should eat that, that we shouldn't bill that. And I said to the contrary, if we found out that we were overbilling someone, we would issue a refund check. So, you know, it's owed to the city. The water was being used, the meter's working properly. And so we tried, we set up, tried to contact the person. Of course, when it's a final situation, that person is leaving the city. They're not living in that home anymore, so your recourse isn't as, you can't shut the service off, it's not going to impact them. So you have a more collection. So we contacted the person, we advised them what was going on. The realtor got involved, and we set up a payment plan with the prior tenant, and we worked out payments. This city council has approved a policy that if there is faulty equipment for a homeowner and they bring in a receipt, we allow that, them to enter a payment plan. And during the time of that payment plan, late fees, you know, we give them the opportunity to pay for that faulty equipment over the course of the time without assessing them late fees. That's the same policy, under that policy is how I determined that we could do a payment plan in these situations. With this past water billing, we sent out letters with the bills. The Department of Public Works drafted a letter, and we sent it with the bills, and we stuffed a card for everybody to do that have these meters, to do an inside and an outside read. We've been getting those cards back. It's not a real accurate science because somebody will read the Detroit Edison meter and somebody will read the water meter. And some of them are absolutely no help. Jeff and I look at them and say, "This isn't any good." But at least it gets us a list of who needs to go back out and be visited. So the water billing process is that if, when we determine these things, we will work with the owner to try to make it work, you know, into their budget. My opinion would be that that owner would need to contact us as the city and ask what we can do. And that's how we try to pursue the issues that, you know, and the other one, the email that was sent directly to the city council, Mr. Campbell forwarded that to me, and that was the first, really, that I had heard that anything was going on there. So, I mean, we have a number of these reads, we have a number of reasons why people have high consumptions and stuff like that, and we, you know, are billing 4,300 customers. And so it would be nice if we could pull all those out and individually address them and, you know, but when the bill goes out, if they contacted us directly and worked with us, we'd be happy to put them on the plan going forward.
Mr. Fordis, do you care to comment at all?
Yes, please. Thank you. So I think basically between Mickey Joe, her department and my department, we've instituted a number of new programs with water meter reading. And catching these three, you know, discrepancies is the result of one of those programs where for final reads, we do require an actual visual inspection of the meter and the plumbing and get a direct read from that, not relying on one of our remote reading devices. The Park Place, sorry, not Park Place, but Berkshire, and there was a smaller one on Detroit Street, those are both results of that new program where final reads are done in the house. The Park Place, one that I believe was emailed to council, that discrepancy was first detected in 2009 as part of our standard program. There was a notice delivered in the next billing cycle in 2010, and there was no response. There have been multiple, you know, stop-by, door-knock type requests for service, and those had been unsuccessful. And then in 2013, four separate notices were delivered, and finally on the fourth one, the person responded. And by that time, the discrepancy had grown quite a bit. So, you know, we, the program that was in place in 2009 caught that discrepancy. We've kind of have a standard, when the inside meter and the outside reader are more than 5,000 gallons difference, that's when we'll go in and replace the meter. So that, again, that was detected in the final quarter of 2009, and we were unable to gain access to it until just this past month. So, and we have ramped up what we call the postcard program. That's where we ask the residents to fill out a postcard, read the inside meter and the outside meter at, you know, very close time to each other, send that information back to us. We've compiled some of that data that has come back so far. We've gotten about 17% of the cards returned, and out of those 17, some of them, as Mickey Joe mentioned, are difficult to interpret. But of them all, I'd say there's only about 11 that are just not usable, but we've only found one so far that has a verified, you know, true difference that we're going to follow up on, and we'll probably replace that meter. And extrapolating that rate to the whole volume of these meters, we're looking at five or six, where there's a discrepancy more than 5,000 gallons.
Thank you both. That was very thorough. Are there any questions for city staff? Mr. Girbaw?
Is this a specific meter that we're having problems with? Or when you said 400 meters, I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
Yeah, there's, we have roughly, basically, three different kinds of water meters in the city right now. And the group that we, these are the oldest meters, and they have, you know, water meter technology itself hasn't changed that much, you know, the internals that are actually spinning around and measuring the flow. But how you read it has changed a little bit over time. So to avoid the hassle of having to get inside of all these houses, this group of meters has a, it's kind of an electromechanical external reader so that we can just go up to the side of the house and see the numbers displayed there. But because it is a mechanical device, it is possible for, you know, one of the teeth of the gear to break off or, like, you know, a bug or something to get in there.
Is there a unique reason why we're using those meters in these situations versus all the other meters that we're using?
It was state-of-the-art at the time.
At the time?
Yeah.
So now, what, but what do we, I mean, question, what do we do now? And do we still send people out to read the meters, all of the meters?
This group of meters, yes. You actually have to walk up and visually read it, but it's on the outside of the house. Newer meters are read by radio, you just have to drive by.
So if we were to, like I had said about like the sidewalks, stepped up the replacement of these, we would save not only the cost of having individuals going out and reading the meters, we would potentially solve this problem, too?
Well, then that replacement program has been going on. We replace about 100 a year.
But if we were to replace 400 of them all at once?
We'd be done.
Well, you know, we have to obtain access into the house, and that's not an easy task. Even just sometime trying to get a hold of the resident and advising them of a problem can be a task.
I know when we've reduced the level of staffing for you all and everything, you have to fit this in with everything else, so it's like, how many more years it would take, four more years to resolve that?
Yeah, then there's a cost. There's a material cost.
Right.
In addition to the time to gain access and make the appointment and, you know, get in there and do the work.
But being as an enterprise-type arrangement, those costs are rechargeable, and that's part of the whole process. So this would be something that potentially would be offset by the savings on the staff having go out and read the meters by putting new meters in place, and over time, that should be a reduction.
Overtime, yes.
My thing is, I'm just looking at this thinking, if this is a potential problem with just a simple, single meter, and we're seeing, you know, out of just a few that we've got another problem, it might be more beneficial for us in the city to really address this at once.
Well, I mean, in terms of percent, we're looking at just slightly more than 1% that are showing problems. So I think that's, that's a pretty high accuracy rate.
And you are replacing another 100 this year?
Yes.
Okay. When does that take place, in the summer months, fall?
We spread it out throughout the year. And again, it's, we focus first on the ones that we know have problems, and then we're kind of trying to chunk it out in neighborhoods so that we can replace a whole, you know, a whole small district with the radio reads.
So basically, at the rate we're going, we'll have all of these old meters replaced in the next four years?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne, did you have a question?
I, my question was similar to Mr. Girbaw's, and I support his point of view, which is to accelerate. Because it is an enterprise, it can absorb the cost. If you can absorb some more workflow, I would like to see it accelerated.
Could you, Mr. Fordis and/or Ms. Bennett or both, could you maybe in the future get us some sort of analysis on how we could go about supporting you, I guess it's more DPW than our treasure finance department, in accelerating this process to replace these meters?
Yeah, I'll look into that, see how many, I think we could possibly do.
Because I think on the one hand, it rectifies these problems, and then secondly, it reduces not necessarily a financial expenditure from your department, but it reduces sort of a labor-intensive task.
Yeah, and that's really where I'm more looking at it, from that perspective, the overall solution.
Actually, I should ask, that's the consensus I'm hearing from Mr. Burgoyne, Mr. Girbaw, and myself. Do other council members support Mr. Fordyce looking at expediting or accelerating the process here?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, I think so, as long as he can fit it in with his capabilities.
Right. Okay. Mr. Har?
Yes, I'd like to see cost-benefit analysis. I mean, if there's really only 1% of the meters that are experiencing serious problems, it's a balancing question, I guess, in terms of your personnel time.
Mr. Peters?
I support.
Okay. Well, I guess what we're really looking for, Jeff, is not, you know, not your commitment to do this, but just sort of an analysis on how it might be done.
Right.
And how we could support you in that endeavor, if at a future date that was the consensus of council. Okay. Are there any other questions related to this issue for city staff? No? Okay, thank you both. That was very thorough. Appreciate it. We move on now to the fireworks ordinance. Of course, that was adopted last month at the request of a few council members. We added this as a discussion item, and of course, our attorney, I believe, provided some information related to this issue. So I will, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith, and then if council members have any additional questions or comments, we'll entertain those at that time. Mr. Smith?
There were some questions, as I understand it, about listing this ordinance on the table of fines. That would be a good idea. And in fact, there's also a revision of many of our civil infractions underway. As we took over the prosecution, my partner, Mark McInerney, observed that a number of ordinances could be updated and some of these fines updated, and he is suggesting that, so we will fold that into the analysis. I also had occasion before tonight's meeting to talk with Councilmember Burgoyne, who suggested maybe we want to default, the default to be for civil infractions rather than misdemeanors, and we'll look into that at the same time.
Okay, very good. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Then our final discussion item was added by Councilmember Burgoyne, and that's the former service center property. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, there's a strip of land in limbo there, and it was not included with the service center property to be sold, with the thought that maybe Celine Electronics might need it for rail access in the future. But as it turns out, we did receive a map that shows that there's about twice that length. There's sufficient length that the property owner has along the rails themselves if they want access to rail, which they've never asked for, but they could have their own access to rail. So it seems as though if we have a kind of a stranded piece of city property and we forego whether it's 50,000 or 90,000, whatever the amount of money is that you get for it, it's an amount of money, it's tens of thousands. And it would be useful to whoever buys the property, because a little bit more land, I think it's 1.4 acres, some more acreage allows that developer to have a little more density. So it seems as though we should include it. So that's why I'm bringing it up. When will we decide on that? I'm just bringing up the topic because it seems that staff needs to know what parcel they're talking about and...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff's understanding at this current time is that they want the council's position, again, the majority of council is the approximately 8.24 acres, so, as well as the 0.53 acres, which is a little piece of property in the very southerly portion adjacent. So everything south of the railroad and to maintain the portion, I believe, the portion of property that Mr. Burgoyne is speaking of, to maintain that at city ownership. That was city staff's last understand, most recent understanding of the last detailed discussion that this council has had on that property.
Right. But at that meeting, we didn't have the maps, and the thought was, well, maybe leave it there, maybe Celine Electronics might need it. But it turns out they have a whole stretch next to the rail. So... But it turns out they have a whole stretch next to the rail, so.
Well, let's see about then getting some consensus on this. And if it's a consensus that we have a future discussion about that, I suppose that that's fine too. But my understanding of what the majority of council felt is identical to what Mr. Campbell just articulated. So I guess I'm interested in whether council members agree with maintaining that approach or whether they want to deviate at this occasion and market some additional, an additional component of that parcel in the sale of the former service center. Mr. Roth?
When we had our meeting with a potential buyer, he indicated that he really didn't have any use for such. But I don't know whether he considered that it would allow him to have an increased density for his building project. Therefore, since we were going to, in the past, hold even more land for future use that the city might have if it may be a rail connection, at least we'd have a little piece. So I don't believe unless the prospective buyer can leverage having more acreage, that anybody's going to pay any more for the remaining, the parcel that they're looking at.
Okay.
So it's one of these things we need to work out at this, at this point in time. I'm comfortable with the state of the way we are with this potential buyer, that he didn't indicate the interest.
Okay. Mr. Girbahn?
No change in opinion.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes?
After receiving more information, think about it, I'm, I have a difficult time envisioning any use that the city would make of that long, very narrow parcel. And so I would be in favor of offering it to the developer.
Okay. Mr. Tahr?
Am I understanding correctly, this is a piece that's north of the rail?
Yes.
And, yeah, okay. And what we're selling is south of the rail, so it is not contiguous with the parcel that we're selling?
Correct.
So I don't see any reason to add it.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
I thought this little chunk of property was held in future use for rail service to the city. Is that a legitimate cause or not?
Not the whole piece.
We have two other sites along the rail. We have across the rails from Flatout, Flatbread is a piece of city land with rail.
Well, then I don't have any problem with offering that piece of property for sale.
Okay, so we've got Mr. Roth who wants to...
I can change my opinion after hearing the rest of the discussion.
Okay, so Mr. Roth would be in favor of marketing that parcel, Mr. Rhodes would be, Mr. Peters and Mr. Burgoyne. So it appears that a majority of council are in favor of offering that to a developer. Okay? Okay. Okay. If there's nothing further on that point, we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No, is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council this evening? Just to reiterate, we will not be having work sessions on both of those dates, but we are holding them as tentatives until we receive consensus from a majority of the members of our Special Projects Commission. And again, the work meeting, whether it be on the 5th or the 19th, will be devoted to a discussion about the future of tax abatements and our tax abatement policy as a municipal unit of government. And we will have regular meetings beginning at 7:30 on both the 5th and the 19th. At this time, I need a motion to convene into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular, to discuss a confidential written legal opinion subject to the attorney-client privilege. The city council will not reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. This requires a motion and then a roll call. Is there a mover?
I move.
Moved by Roth to convene into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Tahr?
Yes.
Councilmember Girbahn?
No.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Mayor Marl?
Yes. We are convening to closed session at nine forty-eight PM.